Welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting 102. It's June 18th, 2024. And today, we are joined by Tavo, by Sugar and Spice, Vanessa, Colly, Daniel, Ian, Konichi, Mikasa, Nathaniel, Timi Lehane, Walter, William, and William. And Esther Williams is here as well. Awesome. And we've got Hogan in the waiting room. Should be here in a couple of seconds. Thanks all for being here. As you can see on screen, relatively straightforward and simple agenda today. Might end up becoming a short town hall. We'll have to see what the open topic section brings. We'll start off with a couple of mentions and then a bonus reminder on the quarter three budget deadline schedule. This was posted yesterday on pretty much every Discord channel, but yeah, just as a bonus reminder. And after that, want to have a quick check in on time zones across all participants and people in the program. That's going to be done relatively quickly and then there's space for open topics if they appear. And if they don't, we might have a quick one. So we'll see how that goes. All right, then kicking off with a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. Basically, we're a community of people that align with the mission efficient of the Singularity Nets ecosystem. And it feels like helping out, contributing to it. And we do this in a wide variety of self-organizing workgroups across a lot of different themes. If you're interested in helping out, we do have a workgroup that fits here. You could check the Getting Started channel on our Discord server. This will get you started. Then to really kick things off, a couple of mentions. First one on deep funding round four. The vote is closed, so no more action required. Simply waiting till upcoming Monday. When the results will be shared. So fingers crossed and best of luck to all of those who proposed. Then as a conclusion of last week's town hall, next week, after the town hall. So either on Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, we'll have a workgroup lead call. And I posted in the forum section of the Discord server. Made a post on, yeah, including a when to meet link for these three days. So if you are a workgroup lead or representative of a workgroup, please do fill in that when to meet. It would be great to at least have during the very first workgroup lead call to have as big of an attendance as possible. Yeah, and then also in that same post in the forum section, I posted a survey, a Polish survey on reflection on the budgeting process with basically trying to improve every iteration of the quarterly budgeting. And yeah, that form will, well, it will allow you space for feedback. So we capture that and actually can improve. And then, as I mentioned earlier, yeah, a quick reminder on the deadlines for the quarterly budget submissions. Today is June 18th and the submission deadline is June 19th. That's tomorrow. So... Yeah, I'm aware quite some people have to do quite a bit of work today still. Yeah, you can, I'll walk through the schedule. You can see it here, but just for completeness sake. It includes a quick reminder that a report on Q2 activities is required. Mandatory for a Q3 proposal. This is the very first time. Earlier, it was kindly suggested to have a quarterly report included on your next quarter's proposal. So over time, we're slowly moving to having that required, which is now. Then we'll have a, once, once everything is submitted, we'll start the consent process. We'll have a relatively straightforward form for that where people can consent to the proposed budget. The total time for this available is five days. So the deadline of the 24th would be on Quick Check on Monday. Yeah, that sets us up on Tuesday during governance workgroup to review and then figure out what the state of the consent process is. Then if there's any, any changes needed, if there's objections to the, to the proposals, the new ones. Can, oh, this is already confusing. Oh dear. I see there's two deadlines. I think the deadline for making changes is the 27th.
Yeah, I think, although it's just an old sticky note to be deleted.
Oh, it made it into the screenshot. Great. So I think if I'm correct, then the one week for updating proposals deadline and the submission deadline 27th, that's incorrect, right?
Initially, it was this one week, but then we decided no, because you already can see consent results. And when you review, you get only two days to submit. So basically, the one week for updating proposal deadline, delete this. This is not information for humanizing.
Well, it's a screenshot, so I can't, in this slide, delete it right now. Sorry to add to the confusion there. Perhaps a little explaining post in the, in the reply. Yeah, a reply in the Ambassador General channel would be helpful there. Yeah, and then basically for the adjusted proposals, if there was objections, the deadline for that is the 30th of June. And then these will be reviewed in the Treasury Guild of July 1st. And then on the second day of the quarter, the governance workgroup will review. And then we should be good to go. And yeah, this would, finally, after, I think, three quarters, over the past three quarters, we've managed to slowly catch up with the delay we were facing.
This is not slowly. That was like, that's too now.
It, it, yes, agreed.
I literally finished my Q2 proposal and then next week came when I get into Q3.
No, it's very true. Yeah, timelines are short. At the same time, it's, yeah, it's spanned across multiple quarters of trying to catch up. But then hopefully in two weeks from now, we are actually in the position where quarterly budgets are finalized before the start of the quarter. And that's quite an achievement, looking back on the past year. So I'm, yeah, there might be some bumps in the road here and there, but I'm pretty confident we'll, we'll be able to be on track with that. And well, smoke come there as well on Q4, not to stress you out. But then the plan would become to only be working on this, well, the current schedule you can see on screen. Only to be working on that during the third month of every quarter instead of pretty much permanently having to think about budgets, we would finally be in a somewhat nice flow. So yeah, I hope that brings a bit of clarity. I do see a whole bunch of messages in chat. But if anybody has any questions they'd like to ask on this, please raise your hand and speak up. I see. Vanessa wondering about the Q1 2025 budgets. No stress, no stress. We'll get to that theoretically only in December. And it would also be finalized in December. So yeah, that's, that's what we're working towards to basically only worry about next quarter during the last month of the current quarter. Not really seeing questions, so I'll move on, I think. Yep. All right. That brings us to a check in on time zones. It was raised on Discord. That's a bit unclear when people are available, basically. You know, we're a global program and there was some experimentation in the AI ethics workgroup having two separate sessions. And we had some instances earlier, like a couple of months ago for, for, yeah, events, putting them on different time slots to accommodate for, for a global audience. So yeah, would like to invite all of you to, also in the Ambassador General channel, to fill in the poll. Vanessa?
Yeah, the time zone check in that I posted in Discord, it was more of a consciousness raising thing really. Because I just realized how little I'm aware of what time it is for people, you know, and the struggle that people are having to come here into a meeting, you know, because I'm in a time zone that's quite nice. So I just thought it maybe would be good to just go around everybody and ask everyone to say, what time is it where you are? If people don't fancy it, then no, but I just thought it would be interesting. I don't know.
I fully agree. We can definitely do that. I figured just for also capturing it, I, without checking in on it, just wanted to put a poll on Discord that's running for a week. But yeah, definitely interested on hearing what's, what time it is for people in the room. I see a couple of comments in chat already. If you want to speak up, feel free to open the mic and go for it. The chat works as well.
For me, it's 22:00.
It's 1:30. I'm sorry.
All right, it's 2:00 PM. Oh, rounded, rounded off to the top of the hour. 23:00 PM. For me personally, it's 20, so 8:00 PM. 7:00 PM. Any night owls?
Yeah, slates and night owl. 23:23. That's magic.
15:00 PM. Okay, okay. 1:00 PM. 7:00 PM. Okay, okay. It's a bit tricky with these things. And that's also partially why I figured a week running poll would be interesting. Because the people for who this current time slot, let's say, would be completely unworkable. They're not here, right? So...
The thing I see from the chat is the undefined formats. The thing we look at the vision operation every time, we look at the date and figure out, hmm, is this a month or a day or a month? All about these numbers. Imagine if you have to take that Zoom chat an hour and turn it into analytics, so many formats.
Yeah, true. It's a struggle. We barely have any AMs, which, if my logic works, would be Asia, right?
There's Walter at 11:00 AM. I think that's our earliest.
Oh, that's, that's the morning, absolutely.
Now I think, I mean, it should go that way. It's not Asia, but America.
You're right. I need some Googling to be actually sure. Also, right now, Beijing would be 2:00 AM in the morning, or night, rather.
California would be 11:25 because they're three hours behind the East Coast. And I think Hawaii is another three hours before then.
Never. It's so hard to say. Like you, I'm barely seeing any comments from people, like Asian people calling out, like, yeah, it's all nice what you're doing and then it looks, looks okay. But this is just not working for me.
You need to incent your translators even more with something to do and get them engaged.
Well, maybe that's it. It's tricky. Like in a way, in a way, we aim to be a global initiative, right? But I'm quite unlikely to do 4:00 AM meetings, not gonna lie there. I think everybody respective to their own time zone wouldn't like 4:00 AM meetings. But if you look at our meeting schedules, generally speaking, it's between, let's say, 10 and 10, or even 10 and 8 UTC. So 10 AM and 8 PM UTC. So in that sense, we're kind of skipping on half of the, well, to be fair, there's a lot on Town Hall. But there I bump into the issue personally. It's at midnight. It's like, yeah. But then my morning meetings get crushed, you know, you need to sleep. So... Yeah, we can, Vanessa, we can have a check in on this on a regular. That being said, well, we can continue on the topic. But as far as predefined meeting topics, that's it for today. So any, any further thoughts on the, on the time zone stuff, like, maybe it's a non-issue. But also maybe it's not. And we're just ignoring half of the world.
We just need to be aware of the time zone and there we now then, yeah, check out the edges are increasing so that we know that when is the time to move stuff or make split town halls into two maybe. But we technically are getting now three town halls.
Yeah, very true with the African, well, African is kind of close to UTC focused, right? So it does spread.
We need Americans, American town halls.
Yeah. Walter, go for it.
And the question, what do you expect to accomplish at the meeting of the leads that we are not accomplishing in this meeting?
Well, it already united last week, more or less. Well, we had breakout rooms that didn't quite work out too well. But there, the topic of having somebody in a navigator role was discussed. And yeah, basically then at some point, it was a bit of discussion on, well, what kind of workgroup would this fit under? And the argument was made that this would be a cross-workgroup one. So it's not like, it would be an open session. It's not like it's going to be a secretive. We're gonna discuss workgroup leading stuff here that nobody can hear about. But it would be a monthly check-in focused on syncing between the workgroup leads to, well, for example, avoid duplicating efforts, reinventing the wheel. If that somewhat answers, but feel free to further ask.
Well, I mean, we already gone through the process of having the ambassador subgroup. Then the roundtable thing was not accepted. So I mean, like, seems like another effort in the same direction. And this, I personally very much intentionally avoid grabbing the title of a lead, regardless of how much I get involved in anyone. Because to me, having a collection of centralized units within a supposedly decentralized organization is not good either. And we've tried not to do that, for example, in R&amp;D. And I keep harping about how there should be almost mandatory call lead so that the lead can take a break. And here we reinforce this structure that there are these distinctive leads that now get to, I mean, if this was a, some kind of planning or sharing session. Okay, that's one thing. To call it the meeting of the leads, it's kind of like, okay, I, you know, it goes against my philosophy, so I'll skip it, as you know.
You can.
By its leads, I explicitly don't lead.
I get what you're saying.
Help things along, but...
Helping getting things along is exactly what the focus would be of the call. First of all, it would be an open call. It would not be a restricted, only if you have a Discord tag, you can join kind of call. And perhaps a workgroup representative of workgroup point of contact would be a more fitting description. Yeah, it's, it's not gonna have any bonus governance power or any, any, as you called out on the early efforts with the ambassador role and the roundtable. Yeah, there's really no need for, for going that direction. And I don't think this is. I think it's about synchronizing, making sure people don't have to reinvent the wheel. Sharing tips and tricks, identifying issues and smoothing things out.
Well, I mean, if there is any, I mean, those are all great activities. Why aren't we doing them here? Like, do we really need two separate meetings? One where we, this is one, and then there is the other one where we do real work?
It's not so much done, yeah, well. I would say it's a different activity if we spent, I'm not saying we cannot spend the town hall on that. I don't know. The idea there was to have it like after the town hall with the workgroup updates. In the week following that, to have a sync and call with the workgroup leads. And in itself, I'm really not against putting it on a time slot, but at the same time, yeah, then it takes away one of the monthly tunnels. But very open to input.
I remember that the idea to, to do one came from recently arrived people who want to be leads and want to schedule a leads meeting. I mean, like, I'm sensing a distinct new undercurrent of people who don't want to do work explicitly, but want to be leads explicitly. And I basically resent that in what's supposed to be a decentralized organization.
I get where you're coming from. Absolutely. As said, I don't think it would be a centralizing force or impact. I do agree on the naming side of things. Calling it a workgroup lead call. Perhaps a workgroup sync call would make it less, sound less centralized. Because it would really not be about the, like, some workgroups do have a lead. There's no discussion there. That's just what it is. Earlier today during governance, we touched on the, perhaps requesting all the workgroups to have a secondary person, a secondary point of contact. Yeah, I don't think anybody has any interest in creating a centralized, okay, maybe that's a broad statement. There's a lot of people involved, of course. But yeah, from a program perspective, there's really zero interest in creating a centralized additional force. And it would more be like a workgroup point of contact, which ideally would be in the, know as much as possible of the ins and outs of the workgroup. Yeah, like a representative in chat as well.
Yeah, representative, I mean, letting each group, you know, each unit know that this is being planned. Please send a representative. That would be perfectly, you know, smart. But basically having a singular lead assures that the unit is fragile. And we've seen this execute, you know, again and again. When the person changes their mind, doesn't plan, you know, a transition. So in nonprofits where people genuinely, you know, want to maintain the effort, there is always like a plan for lead, call lead and prior leads. So basically, it's kind of like, there are three people that explicitly maintain continuity that the next year, the whatever call lead becomes a lead so that the lead doesn't feel overwhelmed. And but they're kind of around like previous colleague to help the transition. It's, it's really like, you know, well, just consider if one day you stop showing up because you need to, I don't know, whatever, take a six-week vacation, you know, the whole deal will come to a screeching halt. And that's not good. You really do want to train yourself a helper. You know, basically, cross-train every, every task you do, seriously. It's gonna be a relief. You could just like take a week off and everybody will be happy, first of all, yourself.
Well, I have some experience there in summer holidays and in two months from now that will be popping up. But no, just, I, I, I fully agree. And I don't think, I, I think that's, that's quite aligned with pretty much everybody. Moving to the next hand, oh, one tiny remark still. Maybe I should have introduced it not as a workgroup lead call, but as a workgroup sync and call. I think that, that completely changes the perspective while the intention of the call doesn't change at all.
I support the name change for clarity. And I see it as basically resurfacing, re-emerging again like the need of coordination. Because we have had these situations before when we think of the ambassadors on the channel or some special group. And yeah, I'm not sure if this going to be lasting like all the time every week. Every, or is it again, something that is coming up last few months? And then people are getting more accustomed again. Because this leading also happens already naturally because of the tools we use. But comparing now six months ago, and now we have a lot of new people in here who have taken a leading position, but uncertain how to coordinate with other members. So yeah, if an in-person meeting helps to kind of get aligned on when budgets are coming in or what is needed for the next month, or what other workgroups are looking in for input? And where are holes where we can submit stuff? Where are we voting? Why do we even vote? Like, all these things could be coordinated there. And I feel like eventually they will get more standardized and there will be more like videos or guiding materials as we speak. And so, yeah, I think this is the natural. so, yeah, I think this is a natural thing that comes up every now and then, that people just want to and they get grasp on what the hell is happening with the the group in general, and down halls, they are doing it, but then again, down halls are also trying to connect the outside, also onboard at the same time, while, so, so I feel like the monthly updates where we give each other, like what we do in workgroup is just a small part of it, where I assume this, these calls will have more of a general, like connecting topics.
Yeah, absolutely, um. Any thoughts from anybody in the room who hasn't spoken yet, or, or who had spoken already? That's also welcome, of course.
I'd like to get back to the concept that there is, there are activities at the organization level that are funded at the organization level. Uh, by way of example, the work that TiVo does to maintain the, uh, core contributor list is definitely, you know, at the organization level and as such uh, should be recognized as such and funded as such, you know? So I think so many thousand, whatever should be recognized and allocated along those lines.
You know, I do think the work done there is currently being recognized.
You mean, doing the list itself? Yes, that's budgeted, well, that's the reports are basically automatic, so I guess the reward is distributed between all the operators who actually typing that stuff and auditing and making it into transactional, and the service is basically uh, recognizing the tools that is, is provided to, to make this happen. So it's recognized in my opinion.
Uh, when I say recognized, I don't mean it's compensated. I, I mean by recognized like at the organizational level, we tell you that we appreciate it and that you are doing it uh, not only because you're qualified to do it, or you have access to the information, but as a service to the entire organization. Human type recognition, not compensation.
All right, um. Well, I, I do agree, and I, I think on a weekly basis, I thank TiVo four or five times at least. Um, uh, Vanessa, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I really like what you were saying, Walter, about some things are organization-wide, but I just think it is really difficult sometimes to separate out what those are, because so many of the workgroups do things that are partly about their workgroup and partly about the organization as a whole. If they didn't, I think we wouldn't be so cohesive. So, yeah, I suppose I just, I'm just interested as to how we establish what those things are that are organization-wide. Sometimes it's really clear, but sometimes it's not.
Well, I mean, like that contributor, core contributor designation and list maintenance, in some sense, it's a chore. And it's definitely cuts across, you know, all of the all of the units, so that's to me like an easy example of something that's we can assign it to a unit, but like, it, it, at the minimum, it shouldn't be a conscious decision that that unit provides that service to the organization. I mean, I'm cool with that.
But then you bringing this up must be coming from somewhere, like you feel this is currently not in place, or?
Um, okay, I can tell you, uh, the reason for it is most organizations, they're on the side of centralization, where like there is this like founder or two, and then there is this core contributor, core of like three, four more, and then like there is impenetrable, you know, uh, bubble around that. Now, this organization went the opposite direction into this radical fracturing, and I think more balance would be helpful, so that there is, and like, for example, tooling, like somebody, for example, wants to transition from D Work to GitHub or something, you know, there are initiatives that have to do with just the basic operation. Uh, you know, I don't know, we wanna switch from, let's say Discord to Mandarin most, which probably we shouldn't do, but let's say it's that, that, those are organization-wide activities. You know, we wanna maintain, uh, we wanna create our own, or whatever, website or Telegram channel. So we could task, let's say, the marketing group with that, but maybe we should, uh, give them some budget from that, from the separate pool.
Um, all right. That's confusing to me that you now shift back to monetary rewards. I was, I thought I was following, but that.
Okay, so my whole thing about motivation systems is a combination of intrinsic, which is something you're just interested in doing, socially mediated, which you get praised for, and some kind of fungible and like whatever, and if these come somewhere in there, uh, so having all of those aligned is, is the best, is people have different priorities uh, as to which they want most, and that will ma- motivate the most.
My friend, okay, okay, that's clear. Anybody in the room wants to add to that, or potentially, uh, looking at the clock, we still have twelve more minutes on the slots, uh, for, for a potentially different topic, which is also possible. Uh, I, small note, maintaining the clock relatively strict, uh, because I learned from last week. That being said, Tevo, go for it.
Totally new topic. I was just about hyping stuff. I had previously idea, forgot about it, and while Walter was thinking, talking, I just remembered. And there has been, for example, situations, and like, we're going back to the services, uh, that they are offering to each other. I was thinking that ProcessQuid technically could offer a service, but whoever uses a Zoom call and that has hard time recognizing the participation, like going into TWork, then like finding out that the new person who joined doesn't even have a TWork, and trying to figure out train him to get the TWork account, finding even links to all the resources here. Instead of all that, you, we have a like a registry, and you register yourself in this ProcessQuid list that you want your participation to be recognized through Zoom. And then it will cost you five hundred USD, but not from your budget, but from ProcessQuid budget. So you basically get free service, but you don't get free because it's technically taking from our collective budget then. Um, and Wi-Fi USB is, it's, it's around like, less than actually fifteen minutes, and as more I automate it, the less it's gonna take me. Um, but it has this like, you know, this, this, this value there, that it's annoying thing to do, however. It, it, there's like this automator, automation pressure going to kind of make it not happen. And at some point, it's just gonna be API and then it doesn't even matter anymore, and we can lose. But right now, there is not enough demand. I started using it, and it was like, hmm, okay, it takes about time to configure it to make value of it, but there is still this kind of manual, you know, operation there. But if the scale is bigger, and other people also feel like, oh yeah, fuck the TWork participation recognition, and if you want to do it, then you're already doing it. So anyway, that was the thing I was thinking.
Nice. Anybody wants to jump in on that? Or potentially, um, mention another topic, ask a simple question, or, or a hard question, if you prefer.
Tevo. Did you make your background yourself?
Just Google years, years ago.
All right, it's pretty cool. I like it.
Kenichi, feel free to.
Uh, yeah, so, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, our Zili Sprint, uh, the May Sprint ended a while back, and we've, uh, done the awards, so just during a uh, shout out to anyone that hasn't been reported or was part of the report list, uh, with Discord, please, uh, feel free to tag in the Zili channel at the bottom of, uh, the Discord server. So just tag me, Kenichi, or you can reach out, uh, by DM, uh, to get your rewards, and also the June Sprint is officially on, so you can start checking for quests, uh, will start popping up, so, yeah. And, uh, also expecting, um, just like a random call out for trivia on Friday, uh, stay tuned, guys, uh, the, thanks.
Thank you for sharing. Um, in the chat, I see some, um, callouts on unique entries in, um, treasury system over Q one and two. I guess, Tevo, that would be a number you could find somewhere?
Say what?
Uh, on the amount of participants, the, uh, not so much the core contributors, uh, but without any, um, requirements, just the, the, the unique, uh, participants.
Hmm.
Doesn't have to be right on the spot, of course, uh.
I was thinking if the dashboard shows that, but probably not, you know, that needs basically the exit we have.
Uh, my suspicion it, it will hit down.
Have you seen the report? The proposal reporting and reviewing guideline. This has information on, on the rotation of data we have. Requested it exists, actually. There is this distribution exit.
All right, I did, uh, see it directly there, um. But that's, uh, that's something that I feel should be, um, doable to figure out.
Well, we don't need something that's precise to, you know, one. Uh, I suspect it will be close to a hundred or even a little more. Tracking that quarter to quarter will give us an idea of the dynamic of our member acquisition and retention. Uh, longer term, that's probably a good one to maintain, just like, not as a goal per se, but as an indicator of the direction. Uh, kind of comparing quarter to quarter, how many were lost, you know, how many are, are no longer in the list, and how many new ones joined the list.
Hmm. I agree, but, uh, it's, it's good that data to have. Um, we do have the core contributor data a bit more easily, uh, available, but, um, just general contributor data, I mean, it's all on chain, right? So it should be, uh, findable.
The document I shared, there is this, uh, Excel list, so that is the source information where I derive any of the dashboard or information. Somewhere now, I just hope it open.
Yeah, I think the, there's some, uh,
Ninety-four, uh, unique participants who have received uh, who, who are, who have been assigned USD. Then if they have been assigned the AGX, then I didn't check.
Okay, okay. So I, I think I was talking over you, right, when you mentioned ninety-four, but that, that's what I heard, at least, ninety-four?
Yes.
All right.
But it's, I didn't also check, now you need to cross-check it, how many of them get paid, because they, they maybe joined, did something, but they never gave their wallet to us, and so we do not have that, but I guess that's a different issue.
Right, it's not, uh, the total list, but at least it's the floor. You know, if they participated enough to get paid, we can count them as having been around meaningfully. And the real number may be fifty percent more than that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Having done tracking retention before, it's the struggle was it is once people are gone, they, uh, are hard to reach mainly because I think they like. Anyways, I've, in, in a different how, I've tried to understand why people, uh, you know, move on. And whether anything can be done to accommodate them better, it's quality assurance process, but it's been hard to extract that information.
Just need to build meaningful, meaningful relationships. And so if we move on, we move on as a vision, like, at, at least the core things you're doing. For example, even in this call, I noticed, yeah, Nater, I just saw him in Intersect, so I'm like, hmm, okay, maybe he's looking, ways of collaborating, helping, so it's bouncing in similar networks. And we'd stop to refine if some people are taking a new project, like even right now, the deep adding funding, deep funding is technically moving on, but you're somewhat denied because it's like the same ecosystem. Um, so it, I, I, I guess it's just different how people work, and if we are able to provide that culture, that hey, things we do, and if you do open source things, we, we, we can put it together wherever you are, even if you're not fully in simple element.
Yeah, I have an idea floating with, uh, deep funding, help them analyze how many are repeat customers from round to round, and how many are new arrivals, and for the new ones to try and discern whether they finally learned about the program, and then how? And for the others, like why they chose to apply this time and not before, to really kind of unpack the dynamics of involvement.
All right, um, looking at the clock, we are still in the slot, um. Yeah, I think it's time for, for a final check on the room, if anybody has a quick remark to add, uh, a quick one.